I'd like to note that all council members are here tonight and we have Florence Martin's own staff. And we will go straight to new business as being a special meeting. I will read the purpose of the special meeting. Nope, this one. The purpose of the special meeting is discuss and consider whether to take action to authorize the payment pursuant to RCW 4.96.041 Paragraph 3 and Goldbar Municipal Code 2.16020 of all necessary expenses of defending the mayor and council members in a judicial hearing to determine the sufficiency of recall charges as provided in RCW 29.82.023, including if necessary, the costs associated with an appeal of the decision rendered by the Superior Court and issues related to such representation. So we have three motions tonight, and the way this works, we have a motion to defend Chris Wright, and he has to refuse himself from voting in discussion on that issue. We have a motion to defend Davy Martin, and she has to refuse herself from discussion in voting on that issue. And then you have a motion for myself, in which I have to refuse myself from discussion, and I don't vote. So without further ado, I will entertain a motion for one of the council people.
Okay, I move to authorize payment pursuant to RCW 4.96.041 Paragraph 3 and GBMC Code 2.16.020 of all necessary related expenses of defending council member Christopher Wright in a judicial hearing to determine the sufficiency of recall charges as provided in RCW 29856.140, including if necessary the cost associated with an appeal of decision rendered by the Superior Court and to waive any conflicts or potential conflicts of interest that may be related to such representation.
I can do a second on that.
I'll second it.
Okay, do you wish any discussion?
Certainly, I would like, I'd like to hear from, well, does this involve, I mean, I could hear from the people.
No, well, the citizen comments are only at the end.
Only at the end, so we can't entertain citizens.
After you vote.
After, which, yes, that's the way special meeting goes.
Very well, so I still would like some discussion. Because this reads that, including if necessary the costs associated with an appeal of the decision rendered by the Superior Court. And so if the, if the court had rendered decision in favor of Chris Wright, and this, and then there was an appeal made by someone else, I could see funding that appeal. But if the court was to make a decision opposed to Chris Wright, I don't see us funding any appeal.
Oh, I made a mistake. I'm supposed to have the Andy Soto on the phone to answer such questions. We're going to pause for a moment while I go grab a telephone and hook up here. I'm so sorry. I've got a little busy here in the office that I put the phone.
Do you want to begin?
I don't know.
Do I have some discussion to put into this too? Just because I mean the motion doesn't mean I'm going to.
Yeah.
I missed your last one. Well, we had a great discussion about the question.
On another subject, I was saying just to start one quarter, what is the chairman? Okay.
Are you going to speak for that?
Huh?
Oh, yeah. First thing.
Right, okay. Yeah.
But they just, like, pulled all, all the, you know.
You don't call any. Well, we haven't called them if we haven't. Yeah, cause money, that's why he does. That's his job now.
Right. Are you guys planning on taking out?
Yeah, we are. We've got to watch out.
Mike, help out, will you?
Where's his daughter been? Where's your daughter been? Where's Christie? Is she working?
No, she's got a broken ankle.
Oh, my God, no. Wow, oh, I'm so sorry.
She can still cut hair.
By the month.
No, she's in a wheelchair.
Ah, she's in a wheelchair? Poor baby. How'd she break her ankle?
Flipping fell.
You were pushing her.
And this is Joe Beavers.
You weren't there.
So, and we already have one question. Are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, full volume. All right. Ken, would you please repeat your question?
Yeah, so this, this paragraph, the way it's written, says that if necessary, the costs associated with an appeal of decision rendered by the Superior Court would be covered by the city. And, and so I can understand that if the decision is made in favor of Chris Wright, then we would want to, we would want to cover it. And an appeal was made by the opposition, then I would see covering the cost of his appeal. But if the decision was made opposed to Chris Wright, and he chose to appeal, I don't see that the city would be bound to cover the cost of his appeal.
Still there?
Yes, still here. Well, that would be a choice of the cities to make, but the way it typically works, it would be the city would agree to pay for all necessary costs, which would then include an appeal if there is one. It doesn't matter who is the person making the appeal, whether it's the petitioner or, you know, Chris Wright, or whoever else might be, those costs would still be covered.
Okay, we understand that. The point is, can the council accept, accept any appeal by the city? I mean, that we just limit the cost associated with an appeal by the plaintiffs rather than an appeal by the city, which it means we would accept the court's decision?
And then that would be the end of it. So if the, got a, an unfavorable decision in, you know, the city's favor, or unfavorable for the city, then the city would not want to pursue an appeal. Is that what you're asking?
That's essentially what I'm stating, yes.
Yes, the statute doesn't contemplate that. The way it's written, it seems as though that would be allowed, to only pay for the cost of the hearing and not to pay for an appeal.
Well, not to pay for an appeal for a verdict that goes against the city.
Right, so what you would then want to do is, in your motion, say only the cost of an appeal by the petitioner.
However, if I were to extend that, I need to extend that, that thought further, because at some date, at some point in the future, we could always come back and reconsider as the city whether we wanted to pick up for an appeal. If we felt the appeal was justified by Mr. Chris Wright, if a decision was made in opposition to his, if a decision was made to recall him by the court, and we felt there was a justified appeal, we could reconsider that at some point in the future, could we not?
Yes, you could do that. But just so you understand, all the court is doing at this first hearing is determining whether or not the petitioners can go forward seeking signatures so that it could possibly be, be put on a ballot. This is not automatically a recall.
Right.
It's just a determination of whether or not the petition and the ballots are sufficient.
Okay, but, but I don't want to get locked into a series of appeals without further evaluation. That's what I don't want to get locked into.
I think that's reasonable. I mean, the.
I don't see anything that bars that in the statute, so it's my opinion that that would be okay to revisit that later if the city wants to that appeal.
Okay.
If the city got this unfavorable decision and then decided they wanted to appeal.
Okay.
You would revisit that.
So, so we need to modify, make a modification to the motion that any, how, what's the wording for that? Any?
I would say was the costs associated with an appeal by the petitioners.
By the petitioners, okay. So if we modify, if you wish to modify your motion and get a second, so change from cost associated with an appeal to the cost associated with an appeal by the petitioners of the decision.
I would like to so amend.
Okay.
And how I have it worded is to quote RCW 29856.140, including if necessary, the associated cost of an appeal by the petitioner, which I spelled wrong, hopefully you're a lot better, of the decision rendered by the Superior.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll second it.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I had, I was curious about this whole process, actually. I mean, maybe it's more of a curiosity, but curious. And so I took what you did, the RCW 496041, and then tested my new knowledge of RSC to explore what all this means, and it actually came out to a pamphlet. Knowing the territory is where I couldn't exactly find the reference. But this is, basically says, you know, if we screw up, like, because we forgot to do something while we're performing official duties, we can be defended. That's what I noticed there, and I'm probably paraphrasing that a little bit. The other thing that I went down and asked Laura for the actual city code, that we live by the city code, right? And the city code 2.16.020, legal defense of officers and personnel. The city, through its attorney, shall provide the legal defense and the paying of valid judgments and claims of employees and officials of the city arising from their actions or conduct during the course of their official duties, provided, of course, that this section is not applied to those occurrences covered by insurance. So the actual Goldbar stuff really goes along with what I, then I also went, I've got another code, okay, this is RCW 35.21.203, and it's recall sufficiency hearing. And it's, and it says that the necessary expenses of defending an elected official or town official in a judicial hearing to determine the sufficiency of a recall charge as provided in RCW 2982.03, and I think that's been, that's the revised, now it's 298 something else, shall be paid by the city or town if the official requests such defense and approval is granted by the city town council. The expenses paid by the city or town may include the costs associated with an appeal of decision rendered by the Superior Court concerning the sufficiency of recall. That's just the state code allows us to do it, by all that means.
With a particular procedure following.
Yes. So that's, you know, I'm just exploring all this stuff to know what it means, and quite frankly, let me see if I can explain it now. Oh, yeah, I had a nightmare. First of all, Davy, thank you for last week. It really gave me pause for thought. And my nightmare was, whatever means the mayor and the two councilmen were, tossed off the council. Now, these Ken and I, newbies, probably not the best strategy, you know? And my thought is, throwing away these mayor and councilmen, throwing them away, what a disgrace. We're not perfect, by any stretch of imagination, heaven's not me. All of us put our heart and our souls and our time and energy into this very poor-paying job. And, and, and so five people believe there is sufficiency to throw the mayor and the two councilmen away. That's what they say. Now, one councilman quit, and we can't even find anybody to fill the decision. You know, that's, to me, this is getting absurd. And, and then we asked one of the five, hey, please, sit on the council, help us work these things out. We tried, Ken and I tried, but we didn't have any success. So the bottom line, you know, if none of these people are willing to publicly serve, sit up here with us, by golly, sit up here with us. We're, we're more than willing to make the decisions necessary. We absolutely care about this city. And it strikes me that this is not government of the people. I'm sorry, this is government of a tyranny of five. This is my opinion now, this doesn't make a fact. It is just my view. As a newbie in the councilman, the results of this tyranny of five is already disharmony, there's already a budget that's way out of whack, it can only get worse. And quite frankly, I'm not sure I could be a councilman under the tyranny of five. So that's my statement here.
So, so to further that comment, I've given that some contemplation as well. I not only believe it's a tyranny of five, I believe that by the fact that they won't present themselves publicly, this borders on conspiracy, which is a federal charge, and racketeering. Because I believe these lawsuits are intended to fill pockets. That's violation of federal, federal law, and, and they're doing it under the protection of Washington State RCW. So I, like Bob, don't know if, if I would continue either, if, if we don't find some resolution to this problem. But, but we have another issue we have to cover as well, and that is, we don't, we don't have the authority to generate money. And we're already, we're already at the limits of our approved budget for the year for legal defense. And so that's another consideration for us in making a determination as to whether we want to defend or not defend. And I would, I would, if I sat in the shoes of, or in the seat of any one of these three individuals, I would want to be defended as well. And that's not, that's not what I'm saying. But, but I have a responsibility to citizens as well, as I'm supposedly deciding how to spend your money, which is one of the reasons why I wanted to hear your voice. I've heard voice from some people whom I, whom I've taken counsel of, and it hasn't set well with some of the individuals. They, they have differences of opinion, as we all do, but this is a hard decision to make, because, because we're dealing with individuals whom we, we trust, whom you've elected to office, whom you trust with, with your vote, and we need to defend them, but I don't know where the funds are going to come from to do that.
Thank you. Any other additional comments? I will certainly say that in response to one of your comments, both council people wonder, like, approximately 65 percent. Okay, without further ado, we have a motion amended with a second amended, and this is for Chris Wright. Chris, do you wish to have us defend you?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, you can't vote, all in favor?
I.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Okay.
I would like to move to authorize payment pursuant to RCW 4.96.041 Para 3 and GBMC 2.16.020 of all the necessary related expenses of defending council member Florence Martin in a judicial hearing to determine the sufficiency of recall charges as provided by an worksheet of the 29856.140, including if necessary, the costs associated with an appeal by the petitioner of the decision rendered by the Superior Court and to waive any conflicts or potential conflicts of interest that may be related to such representation.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Again, do we have any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
I do. So I, I'm just going to continue on what Ken and Bob both said. You know, I made a comment to Ken before everybody got here. I said, you know, I've got better things to do than to sit here tonight. I've got a family at home, I've got a lot of work to do in my yard, and this is not where I want to be tonight. But I'm here because five people want to run the city. By all means, as Ken and Bob said, come on up, put your name in the hat, and don't run away. Because this isn't an easy job. I mean, people think we sit up here to get exposure. I mean, it's, I've had nobody ask for my autograph. So, you know, I mean, we've got some people out in the audience that have been on the council for years and years. We've probably got people in the room that have lived here for decades, and they've probably never in their worst dreams thought that we would come to this. And it's my opinion that the people that sit up here do the best they can do with what they've got. And, you know, I, I did this because I felt like giving back. It's not about the money for me, trust me. I don't need the money. So, you know, I, I do it because I made a decision years ago that I need to start giving back. So if people want to beat me up for that, that's fine. You know, sticks and stones may break my bones, but names don't ever hurt me. And I'm over it. I don't read that blog, I don't want to hear about that blog, and if people choose to read it, they can, and they can believe what they want to believe. It doesn't matter to me anymore. If you think you're going to push me out, you're not. I'm here, I got two more years to serve, and that's it. So if, by all means, if somebody thinks I should go, feel free to get up here and tell me I need to go. But I want a reason. Give me a reason why I should go. Because I, I don't think that I've done anything to hurt the city. I've dedicated my time and sacrificed my family time. I mean, I'm here every time, unless I'm sick, which I have been, or I'm out of town. But, you know, I don't do this for the fame, I do it because I feel like giving back. So I apologize that you have to be here tonight.
Okay, thank you. And one thing about your comment I forgot to say, the next council meeting, we will have a budget review on, on the agenda. So any other additional discussion?
No.
Davy, do you wish the city to defend you?
I do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Our third motion. Let me write the end of the words here, how it has to be. Do you provide that, Mr. Shaw? Mary, tell us your position. I move to authorize a payment pursuant to RCW 4.96.041 Para 3 and GBMC 2.16.020 of all the necessary related expenses of defending Mayor Joe Beavers in a judicial hearing to determine the sufficiency of recall charges as provided in RCW 298.56.140, including if necessary, the costs associated with an appeal by the petitioner or by the petitioner of the decision rendered by the Superior Court and to waive any conflicts or potential conflicts of interest that may be related to such representation.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes. You know, Mayor, I don't agree with you a lot. I think sometimes you're goofball. But, that's you. And for, for somebody who stepped into this rule because another mayor resigned, you know, you put your name in the hat, you've dedicated your time, you do hundreds of hours here, and you're not compensated for it, you do it for the better of the city. And like I said, some things I don't agree with, I don't think we'll ever agree on everything. But, you know, I, I think you're a good man, I think you've done a good job in, in most cases. And I think this is, you know, I'm not sure what your plans are in the future, but I, I think you've done probably a lot for the city. I know you have, you've done a great job, and I, I would hate to, to see the recall go on you. I think that if you're going to go, go out and blaze of glory, but it's up to you if you accept this or not.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't agree with you all the time either. But I'm certainly willing to negotiate. And being a fellow retired person, I've seen how many hours you put in there. And, you know, and because we are, we get the privilege of serving. And, and I've always viewed service as a privilege, and paying back is, you know, it's an old-time value. By golly, it's no-time value that I certainly see being disregarded here. Oh, it's just so sad. So anyway, Mayor, keep up the good work, and we'll discuss it.
So, so I've had some discussion with some of the constituency that voted for, for myself and voted for you as well. And I think there is, there is some opinion out there that perhaps the day-to-day operation of the city government could be improved upon, and the belt could be tightened in discipline. But I think more what was expressed to me is the fact that the attitude within City Hall itself should be one more of, of helping people, because the individuals that talk to me, they come in with problems, and they're told how to go fix them themselves. And there's, and, and part of that may be budget and people and time, but, but I think the thing that they were complaining about is the fact that, that it's not my problem here at City Hall, it's your problem, I'll tell you how to go fix it, you go fix it. And so it, it's not really a supportive kind of attitude. But at the same time, those same individuals expressed admiration for your leadership and your willingness and your commitment to the city. They believe, they believe that your intent is for the betterment of the city. And so that's my comment.
Me?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have to second, third, fourth what everybody has said. Your dedication, the hours that you have spent, the projects that you have worked on, Goldust Days, you, last year after you had surgery, you were still down there, getting hollered at by everybody, but still down there, making sure that Goldust Days was going. You have an attitude that, Goldbar has the, the fortunate circumstance of being a small town, and the things that you have come up with for us to do in Goldbar have made a small town a better small town. You've tried to do things that make it, what makes a small town good in America, and that is, there's not money enough to pay for that. So, even if I don't agree with you, you've done a hell of a job.
If we all agreed with each other, we wouldn't, we don't need one of us.
That's true.
Actually, Gerald Patton once said, if everybody agrees, then somebody's not doing their job.
I'd like to speak to one of the pieces that, that Ken brought up earlier here, and I heard Chris too.
You've tried to do things that make it, what makes a small town good in America. And that is, there's not money enough to pay for that. So, even if I don't agree with you, you've done a hell of a job.
If we all agreed with each other, we don't need one of us.
That's true.
Actually, Gerald Patton once said, "If everybody agrees, then somebody's not doing their job."
I'd like to speak to one of the pieces that Ken brought up earlier here. And I heard Chris too. And one of the things, one of the principles I try to guide my life with, I'm sorry to get very philosophical, but it's for the greater good. When we live in a wonderful small town, we really have a chance to make an impact. You know, I'm here to serve, Ken is here to serve, Dobby's here to...we're all here to serve. And it strikes me when we, that for the greater good, we need community, one, not two, or three or four. And we don't want to wall off people into Was Falls Estates, or whatever, Was River Estates, that's right, I forget the name. And then there's another place up Creekside over there, and another place over, we don't want to do that. And in fact, we would like to have as much participation from every one of these groups. Here, come on, let's work it out, let's go to positive, we can make this the best place on earth. We just have to focus on doing that, instead of tearing apart. And it isn't perfect, by golly, and I'm not gonna be the perfect councilman ever. I hope not. That'd be boring. I like making apologies, yes. But the point being is, you know, we can do it. So, I'm sorry, I'm rattling now, but thank you.
Official request that support the motion for the Attorney House. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, having finished the business, it is time for citizen comments. Would you like to come up and...
I'll start.
Recording here, so as long as you're speaking in a nice, loud voice, we can catch you.
LY 308 First Street. I've been in this town for quite a while, I've seen a lot of mayors come, I've seen a lot of mayors go. And the one thing, in all those years, that I've always heard was, we have a part-time mayor. Because a mayor that can only be here for a couple hours a week, because he's got a job in Bellevue or somewhere else. Now we got a mayor that's here eight hours a day, or even longer. And we have people that ain't happy about it. Well, that handful of people, I don't think should affect all the citizens of this town. The first time I ever met Chris Wright, he was driving down the road, and some kid was throwing a bottle to the side of the curb. He stopped a kid and told me, "Get over there, pick it up." He got my respect. And there's no reason why the citizens of this town cannot fight for this mayor and this council. Thank you.
Anyone else who might come here?
Lord E. Croshaw, 105 Proft Avenue. I have to say that I've lived here thirty years or better. I have gone through many, many mayors, many council members, and outside of Ken Foster, which was a very old man, and he served the city well, this is the first time that we've had a mayor that puts in full time, he's retired, his heart's in the right place, he maybe not always does everything that everybody wants, but his heart's in the right place, he's always there, you can call him, he'll answer, he'll come. And for these people to do what they're doing is absolutely astounding to me, that they would do this. If they have agreements, why don't they come before the council and state it? If you've got something to correct, then correct it. If not, don't always go, always wanting lawsuits, lawsuits, lawsuits. What are you people going to gain? We don't have the money, so if it's money, you're not gonna get it, because it's not there. If you think that the city needs changed more, come forward and speak up. It's to the public records, every single damn day or week. It's been going on for years, it's disgusting. It's totally disgusting that you would do that to a city, and one of you said, "This is my city." Do you take down your city? I wouldn't think so. This is your home, would you take your home down? No. But you have the audacity to do this to our city. It's despicable. It is totally despicable. And yes, I'm looking at you, Susan, yes, I am, and no, yes, I'm looking at you.
I had my chance for comment too, Dorothy.
I had great respect for Noel, I had great respect for him. And all of a sudden, he turns, just like the rest of them. Why Noel? You served on the planning commission, you had great respect for many, many people. And then, all of a sudden, you get in and you decide that, boy, this is the proper thing to do, is to take down the damn city.
Dorothy, Dorothy, I'd like to shut you down, thank you very much.
Yes.
Any additional comments?
Susan Forbes, 209 Seventeenth Street. I don't have many, many, many public records requests that I've put in lately, do I, Joe?
No, you do not.
I have one lawsuit against the city, aside from the recalls.
Yes.
The recalls, nobody makes a money, period, in a recall. It's not a money-gaining thing. There's nobody involved in a recall. I personally would not have signed it if I didn't feel there was a reason for it. I have tried to talk to you, and my lawsuit would've gone away if I would've got what I asked for on the disk. I asked you to put what I asked for on a disk and give it to me, and you kind of smarted off to me, Joe.
Well, I won't go into the details of that, but if you wish to talk that over again...
I offered to mediate. I got a "No, thank you," without even asking me what it was I was looking for in a mediation. And that, that offer to mediate is part of the reason for the recall, because of some of the action that happened, that wasn't done in a public, open meeting. Don't accuse me of not coming up here and standing up and saying my piece, because I made how many comments from this area, time after time after time. I show up at every single meeting. How many of you people in the audience can say you're here at every meeting, that you care that much about your city, that you're here for every meeting? I show up here every meeting. I'm not out after money, I want the records I asked for. Why can't I have them?
Does she have the records that she's requesting?
I believe she has the records she requested. There is one issue that was reported to court, and the judge who were from the bench, from the city, and there is a way to do that, and the judge didn't feel we needed, didn't feel we needed to go there. Judgment decision, I think.
Re-Callman, 20319. I have my own idea of giving back to community, as you well know. I don't have the guts to sit up here alongside of you guys, I'm sorry. But good luck to you.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
So, I've, you know, I had no idea what the Public Records Act was until I came here.
Okay.
Okay. I heard the term, but I was never involved in a Public Records Act issue. I've asked the mayor, I don't know how many times, why are we getting sued if they're getting the records? Okay? If we're holding records, not saying we are, if we're holding records, then we need to let those records go and get them out to the requesters.
You're there.
You're there. That is the rule, and that is a law, and that's the law we need to follow. We have attorneys for a reason, we have judges for a reason. If our attorneys tell us this, and the judge says that, and it's in the city's favor, it is what it is. You can fight it till the cows come home, we followed the law, that's it. That's, I mean, these lawsuits are coming out of everywhere, and, I mean, I don't know if they're ever gonna stop, you know? But it's all over public records. So, if they have what they have, why are we getting sued? And why are we spending thousands of dollars on litigation to defend against a public records lawsuit where they've already got the records, right, according to the court? If the court says, "Okay, you've done your job," then it is what it is. But, you know, I guess I'm just commenting on what Susan said, that if she had her records, the lawsuit would've went, would've went away. Obviously, according to the court, she got her records, but the lawsuit still stands. So, that confuses me. Sorry, sir.
Callman, 712 Veranda Avenue. And with the work that you folks are doing, I know there's, myself personally, I've gotten recognized by the city, I've gotten recognized by the chamber, the volunteering, other people in here, I know, have gotten recognized for volunteering. And as much as I appreciate that, and the council is a voice, how they appreciate volunteers, in my opinion, there are no greater volunteers in this community than our mayor and our council people. Nobody does a job that needs, needs doing. And what I do, I do because I want to do it, it's something I enjoy doing, and my way of giving back, but it doesn't compare. The stipend that you folks get for leaving here, if you figure it out by the hour, it's absolutely nothing. So, my thanks to you, the greatest volunteers our community ever had.
I have a comment on public records.
Yes.
I became a councilman, I was, I think I was born on the third of January, something like that. Is that right? Yeah. And I hadn't been a councilman a month, and I got a public records request against me. For even before I was a councilman, they wanted it. And I was shocked, I hadn't done anything yet, how can I have, I didn't even, in fact, I didn't even have any public records, none to give. And what's, what is the purpose of this? And I still don't understand the purpose. You brought up...
Spike works.
Huh?
Spike works.
I'm, yeah, I'm, I can't put a judgment on it, because I don't understand it. It just struck me as being very wasteful. Both of me, my time, and especially the city's time, when we're trying to focus on using the money we got for good things. You know, it's terrible. I mean, I hadn't been a councilman in two weeks, maybe. It was a waste. Sorry, I interrupted.
Don't give a moat, please.
Arden King, 44419 First Fur Road in Goldbar. I'm not sure that I'm in, I'm not in the city limits, so can I even talk?
Sure, you're in the community.
Oh, good. Well, we live out in Big Bend, so, you know, I'm not in the city limits. To address the fact of not coming up to city council meetings, I don't feel like I have to, because I have the trust in you people to do what's best. And I trust you, I couldn't even vote for you, because we live out there, but I still trust you. I trust that those who did vote for you voted for a reason, and they know you, and that that's the way it should be. And I don't, I don't need to come, because I think you're in good hands. And when, you know, you read something in the newspaper that's very sad and very hurtful, it hurts you as a community. And that's why many of us are here tonight, because we don't like the hurtfulness that's been put out there in the public. We don't like that Goldbar is accused of having illegal activities going on in our government. That's hurtful, that's degrading, and I just don't see the need of it. Thank you for your time.
Behind this podium, or can I just be here?
Just be here.
I don't have speaker.
Just speak loud, cut the magic.
I will speak loudly, I can carry a voice. Whether it's good or bad, I don't know. I really believe in it is better to live in the solution than to live in the problem. I see an empty chair here. That's a problem. There, that chair, that's a problem. It could be solved. Here is a solution for anyone of five unhappy voices. I know one of the unhappy voices has been spoken to by two of the council members, to become a party, "Come on down, become a party." But so far, no. So now we have this empty chair, and from what I understand, this chair is going to be filled by an appointment from the county, because no one in this city is willing to run, brave enough to run. And why? Because there's a problem here, and you can't be a part of the solution. You're scared, I fear, you know, I don't want to see my husband involved in lawsuits, because he loves the city. You know, I mean, none of us want to see this happen. I don't want to see these five people that I know in town as friends to be so unhappy they want to sue the city. It just isn't right on any of these, you know, all of these people, we've all served on committees, we've served, have served this town, it just doesn't make sense to be at such odds. What a deal. So, yes, we must follow the law, it says we must defend these people, and we must do that. I don't want to hear anything tomorrow about how bad our council is, because they're following the law. You know, that's what you guys are doing. That's what the rules say, you gotta follow. Some people may not like them, and they have to be followed. So, I just ask, if you're unhappy, you can be part of the problem, or get out of the problem, and get into the solution. I'm, I am, I personally am sick of this wedge that runs down to our city. You can't be friends with this one, because they're a part of that one. No, uh-uh. You know, I care for all of these people. So, that's it, that's my two cents, and I hope it works. You know, it's not my end of my two cents, I've got one quick one. If we lose the mayor, and we lose this city council member, and we lose that city council member, we got two left, and they're both saying, "I don't know if I want to be a part of this," then what? Are you gonna run a ghost town? Who's gonna run the town? Nobody's gonna pick it up, because it's a bad seed, you don't want to be a part of it. So, I mean, what is, what's the solution here? Is there not such a thing as negotiation? Can this issue, these issues not be negotiated? You know, that's a question for your lawyer. Can this be negotiated, or does it have to go to this region? It was extreme. Can't we all get along, you know, go every...
Run.
You know? I don't know. So now, I am done, and thank you for your time, and I'll get out of here, I hope I got running, I'm gonna get down.
I just have one more comment.
So, I'll thank the council for authorizing...
I won't run over to it, I promise.
Ken, have we done with the citizen comments? We've been interspersing the council with it, and if some citizen wishes to come back later, or now, okay? Do you get trouble?
I'll hold my comment.
Hi, Carol Kenz, 236 First Street. Now, these are all my friends. There's very few enemies. Where are they?
Get out of here.
No pets? What is this? You know, we're all friends, we're not gonna argue here, because we all know each other, and we know that everybody's on the same side. But what happens to the other side? They just want money? What do they want? Because they're after something, not Joe's head. And this is, if you rumor, very intelligent gentleman said they're after money. Is that all they're after? Are they greedy?
Yeah.
No, well, don't say that. And I said, "We don't have any. How can we get money?" We have one resource, the water. And if the court says, Supreme Court or whatever, we gotta pay 'em, wherever it comes from, wherever your money comes from, it's gotta be paid. Is that what could happen, Joe? Could these people that are suing be awarded our water program totally?
All I can, all I say, there is a city in eastern Washington that went through a problem of NISA, and I think their, their fine and attorney fees are $400 per city. And I think their, their fine and attorney fees are four hundred dollars per citizen. And it's, they will probably, I don't know what they're going to do about it, probably go into bankruptcy. Shut down all services, I do not know. But there are some harsh penalties associated with the Public Records Act. And I, that's all I can really say.
But if the county were to take over our city, would they take over the water program?
Yes, the water, the water would be taken over either by the county or by the U.D.
The county isn't going to give those people the money from the water.
It's hard to say. There's, when I was, to answer your question, we are looking, I am starting to look again into, you know, worst case scenario, as they say. I mean, I took a look at this back in my early analysis of this general situation that I was involved in. And I could see some real downsides. I did a preliminary analysis and have spoken with the county once about this. And we'll be talking in more detail with the county in the near future about this. So, I mean, not that I'm saying it's going to happen, not that it can be forced to happen, but we need to understand the impacts thereof. So, but yes, that's, yeah, Public Records Act is that way.
It's really hard to see people sit right on our council and then turn totally around and come after you people. That is disgusting. Just disgusting. They ought to be ashamed of themselves. And it, it just makes me want to get out there and go door to door and say, "Do you know what's happening?" Because when I was going out, you know, during elections and stuff, people are all mad. You know, they've got their minds in a thousand places. These people don't. These people have all our focus on helping each other. And those, a lot of those people don't give a damn about anybody else. You know? And that's, it's so sad because this is why we're here. This is why we live here. I just don't understand it at all. Sorry.
I will make a comment that I think this is valid. I heard last year that the United States Supreme Court made a judgment against some city in the Midwest. And I believe it was Illinois, but I'm, I'm not confident of this at this point because it's been some months since I heard this. But they, they made a decision that that city could not declare bankruptcy. So I, I believe that the logic there is that local governments are not permitted to do bankruptcies. Unlike businesses and people.
Probably was a special case because there have been cities that declared bankruptcy and are, counties and cities going into bankruptcy. And there was a, what is it? It was a Pennsylvania city that was the first one to actually go through a bankruptcy operation about two, three years ago. First one in a long time. But I, that's a chapter nine federal law, and there's certain ways you do things on that. So, and, and the other side of that is, as Joe was being clear to me, is, is filing for bankruptcy is not any, is, maybe I won't say that. But it's not inexpensive. It costs something. You can go bank, file for bankruptcy.
Yes, it's all sad to me because they are not living life as they should in our wonderful community. They're missing out on everything because, great, that has to be the answer. Thank you.
Just to speak to my wife. I hear us versus them. I hate us versus them.
Yeah, terrible.
Now, why, why the five that filed these suits? You know, any one of them can, my phone number is 360-793-7750. Please, talk to me. Why, yeah. And it resolves something. It'll work because we talked.
And better yet, look eye to eye. Not in with a computer. I hate it. Hate it.
Email can be confused, absolutely correct. And we did it verbally, it was almost the same as eye to eye. It was good. No, you get a chance, you know? So please, and I think all of us are, certainly Ken and I, Angelo, the newbies, we want to hear from our constituents. But I'm sure the old timers do too. What, what do you mean? Old time councilman. This nice young man here. But the point being is that we're all willing to do it. And I'm sorry, we have, we have five people that are just that adamant.